Called order to abort County Commissioners' regular meeting for April 10th, 2014. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag to say a new message, the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Are there any changes need to come on the agenda? Do we know of any changes? Can you get a motion?
No, just accept the agenda as written.
Second. There's a motion to second to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so can I say no? All right. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes, and any individual that would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available at the county manager's office. So at this time, the commission will stand for public input. Please state your names directly.
I'm Art Martinez Reyes, and I'm a retired university professor, 35 years, longtime community activist. I would say hello to all of you, staff, and all our friends and neighbors who are here, de los que están viendo hoy día. I'm here representing the committee to promote democracy for the common folks, including la gente, of course, and primarily to reiterate our continuing support for an increase in the present minimum wage in New Mexico, from $7.50 per hour to at least $14 per hour for all of our working folks. It's time to do this. Our organization is convinced that such a wage enhancement policy would eventually stimulate our economy, we're convinced of that, stimulate our economy by placing billions of dollars across the nation into the bank accounts, into the credit union accounts, into the pockets, and into the family budgets of our hard-pressed compatriots, who we believe after careful review and that they would eventually enter many small businesses, many small businesses and outlets throughout our country as well as in our municipalities and our county, and that they would spend their additional wages that they would be receiving for needed products and needed services for their families. And we all want this. The beneficiaries would be not only working folks and the public in general, but small businesses, no doubt, and also even the governing authorities everywhere in the country. We're also convinced of that. Our new chairperson of the United States Federal Reserve Board, Ms. Janet Yellen, strongly supports the views and positions which we are mentioning here today, wage increases and to bring about more income distribution, a more just income wealth distribution in the world. We also consider it very important and helpful that His Holiness, Pope Francis, also known as Pope Francisco, recently expressed in a letter to attendees assembled at the World Economic Forum in Davos, Switzerland, that the world community should not fail, should not fail to speak out forcefully on important economic issues such as wealth inequality and this wealth accumulation in a few hands. Pope Francisco also asked those in attendance, and I quote, "to ensure that humanity is adequately served by accumulated wealth and not merely ruled or ignored by those who have or control extraordinary wealth and finances in whatever society." I think there are millions of people in the world who say amen, 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 to the Pope and to our new federal chairperson, and I surely agree with it, and that's why I came over here today. I've been to the city council, et cetera, and we need to get this done in order to protect and allow our country to move along the way we should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public input today?
San Uaclean, Grant County DWI. I wanted to give you an update on our Breaking Bad Habits team base that was Tuesday and yesterday, Tuesday and Wednesday, April 8th and 9th. Oh, my gosh, it went fantastic. We haven't got a total tally exactly from the schools. There was over 750 students that went through, and the feedback so far that we've gotten has been very great. We've gotten a couple, I've gotten a couple phone calls already from the schools who are just so appreciative, and the kids are saying really great things about it. And I also wanted to make sure I thanked some people, my staff, Tony Sosa, Michelle Voskis, Tori DeQuizny, and my WNMU social work intern, Mike McGee. Some of the amazed participants, Department of Health, Health Promotions, the Grant County Extension Services, HMS Silver High Clinic with HMS Family Support, El Fuayo, SAS, the Sexual Assault Support Services, Aldo Leopold, the Wellness Coalition, WNMU Chemical Dependency Department Recovery Management Services, New Mexico State Police, Bear PD, Grant County Health Council, US Border Patrol, Judge Laney and Judge Ruiz, Hila Regional Medical Center, they sent over some of their emergency medical service people to work our hospital, a couple of the people from the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department helped in the hospital, Western Bank, NMSU, WNMU, Army National Guard, and of course, the schools. I also wanted to thank a few of our donors, Freeport MacMorhan, Alotta Gelato, Silver City Elks Lodge, the Grant County Sheriff, Raul Villanueva, Grant County Assessor, Mary Guthrie, thank you, Anne Bank, and WNN Enterprises. Also, Morning Star did a great job on the backpacks, and I brought you guys some. Those are our backpacks, and I have one for each of you. And J&amp;G Signs always gives us a discount and does a really great price for our signs and did a great job. And a special thanks to Cobre High School Woodshop, students who built our judges' bench. They did a fantastic, fantastic job, and we're looking forward to doing it again next year.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Any questions? I'm gonna come and give you guys some backpacks.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
I'm Richard Dinwiddie from the Heda River. I bring glad tidings and greetings from the Heda River, and water supplies real good and raining quite a bit, and everything's fine, but we're having a little trouble getting our food tables. Very important my information today, I need some help on getting our food tables that the senior citizens have done. They've been here a long time, they're about as old as I am, so you don't need to add anything else. The walls fall out of the, when we make up a wall once in a while, it falls out on the floor, and we've been at this for quite a while, and I need to make sure I'm coming through the ranks to get here. We went through our OCOO Administrator, then we came, we had a meeting with Mr. Terry Tohido, I believe, and we thought we had this thing under control going forward. We had about probably 10 or 12, pretty scary people participating. And so the meeting with, we got hold of Terry finally, he don't have any cards or they have books, so we had to work to get his number, and we got him to come out, and we had a real constructive, get together with all the other citizens there, because we wanted a cross-section of the senior citizens. We had them from the women came, the crocheting, people came, the vehicle people came, they were pretty good at this, so that we were not accused of being prejudiced in our food table. Anyway, to get to the bottom line, we thought we had done, and that was at least three weeks ago or so, and then we hit the town, and I don't know the rest of it exactly, talked to someone here in the administration, and I'm not the one that did this work, I'm the one that did the work, it's local help that we have, to do this to the tables, stretch the fells, match up the tables, all those kind of things, very important stuff. And so we ran into a nightmare paperwork, we don't have a contractor's license, we haven't filed a WNI or something else, as an exempt, something or another. Anyway, that's why I'm here today. I don't have a cellphone, I can call or to put the signal to them, and we considered it, oh, I'll let that one go by. Anyway, any help we can get, I appreciate the procedure that we need to go through, which are about $500, we probably got $1,000 that we got on our own, we had a lot of people who came up and rallied them up, we did all we can do. So we can let it slide, I can pass the hat amongst the players, and I didn't get $500, but I think it would be nice if we could get some kind of help from the commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public input?
You have to tell us your name.
And you need to tell the world guy's name, too.
This is Diego Lucero.
Can you come over here where you can get a better picture?
Hi, my name is Lonnie Sandoval, Jr., and this is Diego Lucero. On behalf of Cobra Youth Wrestling, we'd like to give Mr. Casten a team photo, thanking him for sponsoring Cobra Youth Wrestling and helping us purge our team buddies.
Thank you very much. Can you come down and get that? Thank you very much. I was thinking about that. Is there any other public input today? Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, approve or disapprove, March 13th, 2014, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the March 13th, 2014, regular minutes.
Second. There's a motion to approve, second, to approve the March 13th, regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so can I say no? All right. Motion passes. Financial reports. Okay, approve or disapprove, April 7th, 2014, expenditure report. John went over this on Tuesday. Do you have anything to add, John?
I just wanted to also point out that we did have one payment to the North Hurrican Sewer System in $82,495 was one of the other big expenditures I didn't point out on Tuesday.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
There's a motion to approve, April 7th, 2014, expenditure report.
Second. There's a motion to approve, second, to approve the April 7th, 2014, expenditure report. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so can I say no? All right. Motion passes. Okay, item C, approve or disapprove, the cash flow analysis report for February 2014. We'll just go over that real quick for, hit the high points, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, start off with the general fund. We began the year July 1st, 2013, balance of $2,451,424, with revenues, expenditures, and transfers through February 28th, 2014, that brought our balance to $2,321,773, with projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2014, of $360,849. Gives us a cash balance in the general fund at June 30th, 2014, of $2,682,622. Less the required reserve of $2,105,342, leaves a surplus at June 30th, 2014, of $577,280. The next page is the budgeted revenues. As of February 28th, we've collected 59.85% of our budgeted revenues for the year. The next is our transfers. As of February 28th, we've done 2.98% of the budgeted transfers. As I mentioned, that we do those transfers usually after the mid-year happens, as we get closer to the end of the year, to balance out those funds. The next is the road fund. We started the year July 1st, 2013, at $267,657. After revenues, expenditures, and transfers through February 28th, 2014, our cash balance is a negative $341,333, with projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2014, of a positive $481,470, leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014, in the road fund of $140,137, less the required reserve of $130,935, leaves a surplus at June 30th, 2014, of $9,202. Next is the corrections fund. Started the year July 1st, 2013, at $407, with revenues, expenditures, and transfers through February 28th, 2014, our cash balance is a negative $1,216,700, with projected revenues, transfers, and expenditures through June 30th, 2014, of a positive $1,235,233, leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014, of $19,226. This fund and the road fund, as I've stated before, go into the negatives until we get those transfers.
Is there any questions? Can you get a motion to approve the cash flow analysis for February?
Second.
There's a motion to second to approve the cash flow analysis for February 2014. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so can I say no? All right. Motion passes. New business. Recognition of the state champion wrestlers from the Cobre and Silver area. Can you guys come up? Do you have anything?
I got a call late last night from Mike Aguirre, and I just, he wanted to congratulate all the wrestlers, but especially his son. These were his exact words, "Son, I love you, I am so proud of you, and I wish I could be there." Unfortunately, Mr. Aguirre's over in training, so those are his exact words, Mr. Aguirre, congratulations.
Sure.
Yes. I would also like to just congratulate these wrestlers. It was really an honor to have so many state champions. I mean, it's really an honor to even place in state, but to have this many state champions, you guys gotta be very proud of yourselves. I've seen most of you guys wrestle since you were little bitty guys, like the little state champion we have over there, and now you're all big kids and young adults, and hopefully you all carry this throughout life and carry on and continue to be good citizens through life, and always carry that champion thought and ability through everything that you do. Congratulations to you.
Something tells me I got a typo here, because it says Diego is 146 pounds.
Cheating damage, right?
Are you cheating, Diego? Are you messing up? Let's get our picture with these guys. Congratulations again.
You wanna have to announce your name to the class?
You guys noticed that?
Okay, so from Cobre High School, we have Chico Perez, Senior, at 170 pounds. We have Brent Horsway, Junior, 138 pounds. Robert Rodriguez, Pacman, 126 pounds. Cobre youth wrestlers, we have Lonnie Sandoval, 130 and under, 130 pounds. Diego Lucero, 800 and under, 46 pounds. Silver High School, we have Carlos Vega, Senior, 195 pounds. Caesar Sierra, Junior, 120 pounds. And we also have silver youth wrestlers, Mike Aguirre, 130 and under, 100 pounds, and Caleb Carrasco, 800 and under, 73 pounds. Is that all of it?
Before you guys leave, I'd just like to, hey, guys, hang on for just a little bit. You know, a hundred years ago, I was in the eastern part of the state, we said wrestlers. But anyway, I was where I was, and the beautiful thing about being a part of that sport, it's run or run, no excuses, and it taught me so many times in life that, you know, you can't look over your shoulder at a teammate, blame him or anything, it's all up to you. So it's a grueling, difficult, but rewarding sport, so congratulations.
Okay, next item on the agenda is we're going to recognize Tristan Moore, state champion of the Elks Hoop Shoot, but I think he's done more than just once. He's a couple of times state champ, and runner-up like Triffle Moore times, and district champ several times, so Tristan, are you here?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can, no, it is. Okay. Three-time county champ, three-time district champ, two-time state champ, two-time runner-up in regionals, and just missed it by just that much getting to go to nationals, is that what I hear? All right, let's go get our picture taken with Tristan. recording, reporting tourism fulfillment for the second quarter. Welcome, Sissy, how are you today?
I'm doing great. Thank you, commissions, staff, community. If I could have my assistant lift the high-tech paper, that would be great. All right, well, I'm really pleased to be with you today, to let you know how we're doing as far as tourism at the visitor's center. We may need to turn the lights off, I'm not sure if that's gonna help some of these colors come forth, but we're doing very well as far as our numbers. We are open Sundays a week, we're seeing Sundays pick up as far as visitation. What we're looking at here is in the green, and this is through March, so March, we were down a little bit, but what's really great is if you look in January and February, you see a real growth as far as the visitation. Now, January, a lot of that's probably related to the weather. We had a much, much milder January. The cliff dwellings have also been open, that helps us a lot, but we are seeing a growth as far as the amount of visitation. This helps us to see even more so that growth, and what we're looking at here is the last three years, the blue being 2012, excuse me, 2011, and we've got 2012 and 2013, 14 fiscal years. So you can see basically there, the growth that we've had, we anticipate this is gonna continue to increase, and I do want to recognize the county tourism committee, they're doing an absolutely wonderful job. They have made a decision to go into two national publications, which historically have brought us a wealth of visitors, and that's Where to Retire and Travel 50 and Beyond. So they're focusing their money on publications that we've seen in the past really pay off. This is showing us basically where our visitors are from, and we do see a very high number of people from Grant County. That's a wonderful thing for us. We've got folks that are coming in for the first time, and there's a gentleman that came in when I was working last week, and he said, "I'm from Grant County, I've been here my whole life. I've never been in this center until three weeks ago, when I came in to use your restroom, and now I'm, every time I'm in town, I'm gonna stop in here." It's a wonderful facility. So it really makes us proud when we see locals coming in. They're also picking up materials to send to friends and family. A lot of the marketing effort from the Silver City Lodgers tabs is actually going into more of a regional market, so that we also see a large percentage of other New Mexicans coming to town. And then we see the green quadrant there, which is Arizona, California, Colorado, and Texas, 26%. So again, the neighboring states, we've got quite a draw, the rest of the US is 41%. Canada is large, and then as far as other international, that's a small percentage, 4%, but we, especially the last couple of weeks, are seeing a lot of Germans, and it's just great. I mean, they're coming in, some of them know about Billy the Kid, but most of them are just coming in to see- So zero, they're not spending any nights here. Then we see one night, of course, a lot of people are just spending one evening. And sometimes what will happen is people will get in in the later afternoon and they were just going to pass through and then the hosts at the visitor's center talk to them, they realize how much there is to do, and we get to talk them into spending a night. We then see it drop off until we get to seven or more nights. That's what this is right here, seven or more nights. And those are people, we've got more folks that are coming in and spending a month. We're spending a couple of weeks. So folks are planning ahead more. And so we're feeling very good about that. We're going to continue to try to grow these numbers. Then the top 10 attractions. Why are they coming? Downtown is still a huge draw. You may have heard about the Smithsonian Magazine recognition that we just had this past month. That Silver City is one of the 20 recommended small towns to visit in 2014. Locals are bringing the magazine in. And the magazine, it mentions and actually has articles on the top 10. And then the other 10 are simply just listed. We are number 18. But in the online version, it has a wonderful article about Silver City and Grant County. And it talks about what a wonderful small town we are, how friendly our people are, the small town, the shops, the restaurants. So this is a message that's getting out. And this is really, people are coming to visit who we are. And as you'll see down here, dining is the number 10 reason. But that's great. That's what we want to see. I'm here to answer any questions. I also want to mention that on some of the nights, the number of nights people are staying, we've got a couple of reasons why not as many people are spending as many nights. And we've really seen it the last three weeks. We've got a lot of folks my age, young retirees, they are actually camping. And so they are coming into our communities, they're buying groceries, and then they're going out to the campsite. So they are not actually staying for nights here in the lodging facilities, although they'll put down that they're spending the night. We also have a lot of people, especially the Europeans, and they're coming up from Deming for the day. And the challenge for us is that our motel rooms and hotel rooms are more expensive. And for these folks that are traveling a month or two, when you start adding one night up over another, and if you've got a $20 to $30 difference, it forces them really to stay down in the Deming area. So those are challenges that we'll try to deal with. We're also seeing more people. And I know Shelby's here and you're going to be talking about the Continental Divide Trail. But we've seen an increase, not only of hikers, but bikers, we're anticipating more horsemen. But we're seeing people coming in from the Continental Divide Trail. So that's going to be a huge economic boost to our area. I also wanted to let you know that the map pads have been revised. It's been 15 years since those were revised. And what's great about it is we actually got the GIS mapping from the town of Silver City. And then we've actually broadened the area that the map covers. So we're going out into the county more, Racetrack Road, Wind Canyon, Bear Mountain, so that you can actually get people out to those further locations. So we're feeling good. Those should be arriving this week. The Visitor's Guide is being updated. That will go to press next month or the end of this month. Last year, we distributed 13,000 of those. They go through our visitor's center, all of the state visitor's centers, and also we take those out to all the other community visitor's centers. And we've also had over 3,000 mailings. I'll come back to you at another time with a total breakdown on what's going on as far as advertising and the distribution of materials. I want to mention to you that tomorrow, we are having two wonderful events tied back with the Western Institute of Lifelong Learning. We are bringing in author Dan Schilling, who wrote the book Civic Tourism. And this is a real concern with our citizens is as tourism grows, they don't want us to lose our personality as a community. And we realize that the reason people are coming is to see our small town and see our communities and see the mine and the cliff dwellings. So what we'll talk about in these workshops, the first one is a brown bag series up at the Global Resource Center at NIN. That will basically be a presentation by the author. And then in the afternoon, we're having breakout sessions. And it's a stories format where people from the community around the region are going to come in and tell us what they love about our area, why they're here, if they're lifelong residents, what they value, what they want to see us maintain. And from that, we'll be able to come back and give you reports so that as we move forward in planning and programming for the future, we're listening to our citizens and we're also keeping our sense of place. Last but not least, I just want to mention that we are working with the Southwest Chacano Music Festival. It's a new group. We will be having Cinco de Mayo in downtown Silver City. That will be Sunday, May 4. And things are moving great. ECD is moving forward and doing a lot of regional marketing, as I mentioned to you. And the most recent advertisement, a publication called Sokolow in Tucson, I will drop some copies off for each of you, but it's collage of different events. So we're really working on trying to get people here, tying back into the state tourism, giving folks a genuine experience. And we feel like we're just going to continue to grow our tourism.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Ceci?
Ceci, do you have any kind of sense of the return of people either buying or visiting us from our larger venues as far as the bike race and the blues festivals and such?
We're getting on the further. I just got a statistician on board. So we are really starting to grind those numbers and try to generate exactly, weekend by weekend, why numbers are up or down. So we'll be able to bring that information back to you. We are working very closely with the lodgers to get that information as well. Once again, that disparity between the information we're getting and, of course, when we get answers, we're running a lot of visitors through the visitor's center, but then only one person will fill in the form for four or five people. But we're trying to be able to give you more fine-tuned information and I will bring that back to you next month.
Any further questions?
No, just thank you. Great presentation. Thanks, Ceci.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, approve or disapprove entering into an agreement with Hazar for the Grant County Emergency Operations Plan. John went over that on Tuesday. We have any questions on that?
Chairman of Grand County Affairs, additional? Chairman, I motion to approve the entering into an agreement with Hazar for the Grant County Emergency Operations Plan, EOP.
Can I second?
The motion is second to approve Hazar for the Grant County Emergency Operations Plans. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say no. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove to reappoint Becky O'Connor and John Rovick for the Lodgers Tax Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that in your packet, we put that letter from Mr. Rovick.
Oh, yeah.
So that is in your packet from Bear Mountain Lodge.
Okay, go.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve to reappoint Becky O'Connor and John Rovick for the Lodgers Tax Advisory Board.
Second. The motion is second to approve Becky O'Connor and John Rovick to Lodgers Tax Advisory Board. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say no. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the Grant County Sheriff's Department Policy 18, Physical Fitness?
To make a motion to approve the Grant County Sheriff's Department Policy 18 for Physical Fitness.
Can I second?
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say no. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the 2015 fiscal year County Administrative Fire Protection Fund Distribution. Grant County gets $55,501. Cliff Hila gets $78,116. Fort Bear gets $55,501. Lower Members gets $78,116. Inasaltis gets $196,307. Santa Rita, Hannover Fiero gets $55,501. Sapien Creek gets $52,418. Tyrone gets $292,920. Upper Members gets $78,116. And Whiskey Creek would get $111,002. And this all comes from the fire fund. Seeing just, can you get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the 2015 fiscal year County Administrative Fire Protection Fund Distribution.
Second. The motion is second to approve the 2015 fiscal year County Administrative Fire Protection Fund Distribution. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say no. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the Grant County Sheriff's Department Policy 18, Physical Fitness?
To make a motion to approve the Grant County Sheriff's Department Policy 18 for Physical Fitness.
Can I second?
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say no. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the 2015 fiscal year County Administrative Fire Protection Fund Distribution. Grant County gets $55,501. Cliff Hila gets $78,116. Fort Bear gets $55,501. Lower Members gets $78,116. Inasaltis gets $196,307. Santa Rita, Hannover Fiero gets $55,501. Sapien Creek gets $52,418. Tyrone gets $292,920. Upper Members gets $78,116. And Whiskey Creek would get $111,002. And this all comes from the fire fund. Seeing just, can you get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the 2015 fiscal year County Administrative Fire Protection Fund Distribution.
Second. The motion is second to approve the Administrative Fire Protection Fund Distribution. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say no. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove program work plan for agreement number 14-73-35-2273 RA between USDA WS and the Grant County for the fiscal year 2015.
Chairman, motion to approve the program work plan for agreement 14-73-35-2273 RA between the USDA WS and Grant County for the fiscal year of 2015.
Can I second?
The motion is second to approve the agreement 14-73-35-2273 RA between USDA and Grant County. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now we move into proclamations. First proclamation today is the Continental Divide Trail Gateway. Dinesha, if you'd like to read that for us, please.
Okay. CDT Gateway Community Proclamation, Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. Whereas Continental Divide Trail Correlation Vision of a Gateway Community creates opportunities for recreation, recuperation, education, health, and employment through a series of recreational communities throughout the Continental Divide chain to be connected by a walking trail. And whereas communities along the CDT are important partners for the sustainability of the trail and its greenways for hundreds and thousands of visitors to the trail every year. And whereas CDT communities are characterized by the abundance of natural, historical, and cultural features, many of which are protected and best viewed and appreciated via the CDT. And whereas CDT adventures overlooks and primitive areas present opportunities to attract visitors to CDT communities from around the world. And whereas this designation as the first Gateway Community will act as a catalyst for enhancing economic development, educational opportunities, health benefits, engaging Grant County citizens as CDT visitors and stewards, and helping community members see the CDT as a resource and asset. And whereas Grant County's sense of place and the protection of the cultural, historical, and natural assets can benefit through this new partnership. And whereas Silver City and Grant County are now recognized and designated as the first Continental Divide Trail Gateway Community and official designation conferred by the CDT Corporation and desires to continue its efforts to support the CDT and its community efforts.
Thank you very much, Dinesha. I know I got some people from the CDT here today. Do you guys have anything to say? Shelby? If it's red, it's on.
Red is good. Okay. Good morning. Shelby Hallmark from Silver City. And I just wanted to just quickly say thank you very much for taking up this proclamation. I think it's a really important event and a momentum builder for Grant County as a destination for outdoor recreation. And as the proclamation notes, it's not just about tourism and bringing people here. It's about encouraging our own citizens to get out and enjoy what is, I think, our finest asset, the trails and the forests that surround us and that are actually within our towns. Opportunities exist for us to build out the trails in our town of Silver City and in the mining district to make life more healthy, safe for kids, and just a better quality of life in general, and to bring out that sense of place that's mentioned. So I really, I appreciate your support of this. April 23rd will be the event, the day of the event when we celebrate the designation as being the very first Gateway Community, which puts, really puts Silver City in a very, very good light around the country and all up and down the Rocky Mountains. You all are invited to join with you. I hope you can maybe sit in different places so you're not creating a public meeting. But we'd love to have you there. As you may have seen, we have a number of dignitaries who'll be speaking. We have one of the warrior hikers, there was an article in the paper this morning about the warrior hike. One of them will be speaking with us about their experience thus far. They will have been two weeks into their hikes. It'll be interesting to hear how that feels to people on the ground. But this is a great event and it's only the first of a series of things that we're working on. The group who got the grant, the Hila Conservation Education Center got the grant from Park Service to work on the issue of trails for, not just for this event, but ongoing. So we'll be continuing to work and probably come in and asking you guys for help as time goes on. But thanks again.
Eventually. Phil, just hold on just a second. We're going to vote on this and then we'll come down and present you with this proclamation. So this time I'll take the motion to approve the proclamation for the Continental Divide Trail Gateway.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation Continental Divide Trail Gateway Community.
Second. The motion is second to approve this proclamation. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say no. All right, motion passes. Motion passes. first through April thirtieth as Grant County Trail Month. Denisha, would you care to read that for us?
Okay. Grant County Trails, whereas interest in outdoor recreational opportunities including walking, bicycling, hiking, and horseback riding is appealing to more and more Grant County residents and visitors. And whereas trails and open spaces enhance the quality of life for our citizens, increase tourist activity in the area, and provide alternative transportation routes for no motorized vehicles. And whereas trail activities are enjoyed by people of all ages and abilities, and are an important part of the Grant County's outdoor exercise is known to improve health and well-being. And whereas engaging in regular outdoor activity is known to improve health and well-being. And whereas our trails are beautiful and valuable, they represent an integral part of daily life for education, fun, and fitness. And whereas Grant County Trails Month is a chance to increase public awareness of the Grant County's trail opportunities and diverse outdoor recreational activities, and promote the importance of a local and national network of trails and greenways. And whereas citizens are encouraged to participate in the scheduled Grant County Trails Month activities to strengthen their community, to preserve the natural, scientific, and recreational qualities of our trails and open spaces. Therefore, be it resolved, the Grant County hereby recognizes Grant County Trails Month, April first through April thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, and urges all citizens to make walking, hiking, and bike riding on local trails a priority activity for themselves and their families.
Thank you very much, Denisha. So who's here today to present the Grant County Trails Group? Is that, is that you guys?
Good morning. I just wanna first congratulate the Trails Committee. Adrian, would you please stand? Michelle? Shelby? And our students. It's been a, it's been a grueling few months with this committee, and we've been meeting once a week, and it has been such a wonderful experience for the fact that Lou Polk created his flyer on all our hikes every Saturday and every Wednesday for the month of April. And J and J went ahead and donated the sign, and we had it posted there next to Silver Heights and Swan Street. What I'd like to say is on Friday, April eleventh, it's gonna be kinda spin-off on how they're going to fix these trails and build these trails, and they're gonna be at the Wellness Center at about, from noon to five o'clock. We did put a couple ads on the radio so people can go learn how to do these trails. And on Saturday, the twelfth, the adults are gonna get together at nine in the morning at the, at the Golees Peak Parking so they can clean up those trails. And the kid, while the families will be down on San Vicente, below the bridge for the San Vicente Trailhead, starting from nine to, nine to noon. It's been a lot of fun. I really, we really thank you for allowing this proclamation. We had an interesting hike yesterday, and Adrian was out there with the camera. We had the gentleman of the Capitan Cinderos show up, and it wasn't a very pretty sight, but he was there. But we really had a wonderful time. We had, we had a handful of kids. And we're going to finish discussing the Wednesday's hike at four P M at Desert High Human Society. It's gonna be a dog hike. And on Saturday, April nineteenth, at ten A M to two P M, Earth Day at Golf Park. Wednesday, on the twenty-third, for the kickoff event celebrating the designation of the Silver City being of the Gateway Community of the Continental Divide. Just what Shelby was talking about. Nine-thirty, Boston Hill Hike, and everybody meets at Spring Street. And Wednesday, April thirtieth, Spin of Boston Mining Geology Hike at Market Street. Please, come hike with us. It was really nice to see the kids out yesterday. Were no phones, they were out there enjoying their hike. Thank you once again.
This time I'll take a motion to approve the proclamation declaring April first through April thirtieth as two thousand fourteen, two thousand fourteen as Grant County Trail Month.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, let's go give this proclamation to these guys. as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Denisha.
Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas sexual assault awareness month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of Grant County. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women and one in seventy-one men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas health, sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the, excuse me, the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of eighteen. And whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages twelve to seventeen were two-point-five times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in Grant County through increased education awareness and community involvement. And whereas Grant County strongly supports the effort of nation, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence. It's time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Grant County Commissioners, join advocates and communities across the country in playing an active role to prevent sexual violence. Along with the United States Government and State of New Mexico, we do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you very much, Denisha. Is a representative here today? Come on up.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve the proclamation declaring the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Hi, go ahead and tell us who you are.
Hi, my name is Kate.
Is the red button on?
Hi, my name is Kate Alstead. I'm the Executive Director of Silver Regional Sexual Assault Support Services, and I'm here with our staff, Stephanie Gonzalez and Susan Bradley. And we really would like to thank the County Commission for proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month as it does stir conversation and really set the tone for our community that sexual violence won't be tolerated and that we all do come together to support survivors and encourage conversation to prevent future assaults in our area. So thank you very much, and we appreciate the County's commitment to survivors.
Very welcome.
Please thank you. It's a, it's a difficult job, and I'm sorry that we have to have a committee like yours. It's sad. But it's for the victims. You're very, you are very necessary, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
And hopefully working with your groups like the County Commission and the rest of the community, one day we can work ourselves out of a job.
That'd be nice.
That's what we want.
Come on up. We'll give you this proclamation in a few. We got one more, though. Can you handle that? Did you give us one?
No, I'm just kidding.
Next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove the proclamation declaring the week of June twenty-second through June twenty-eighth as two thousand fourteen as Cancer Relay for Life. Can you read that for us, Denisha?
Relay for Life of Grant County Week proclamation. Whereas Relay for Life is an activity of the American Cancer Society to promote, that promotes cancer awareness, gives individuals and communities an opportunity to fight back against the cancer. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life of Grant County Silver City supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people stay well, by helping people get well, by finding cares for cancer, and by fighting back. And whereas the American Cancer Society funded more than one-hundred-and-fifty million in cancer research last year through money raised in communities across the United States.
Thank you very much, Denisha. Is anybody here representing Relay for Life today? Hi, come on up. Tell us who you are.
Good morning. I'm Archie Padilla. I'm the Event Chair with Relay for Life, and many of you are familiar with this community fundraiser. We have been raising money here for the past thirteen years, and we've been through some very hard economic times. But in that time, we have raised over half a million dollars. And our event this year will take place June twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth at Silver High School. And this is done with a number of teams. We are, our goal this year is to have forty teams. We have thirty-two so far, and our goal is to raise eighty thousand dollars. And we can't do this without our community and our sponsors, so we thank you for considering our proclamation for this week because you will see in, between now and the relay, you will see many teams out there fundraising and asking for support. Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you do. However, I have a question. How do you form a team? Where do you go?
We have a website, Relay for Life of Grant County Silver City. You just go on there and you can start a team, you can join a team, or you can walk as an individual. Most teams are about ten to fifteen people, and most teams set a goal of about two thousand dollars. We have some teams that are small, maybe raise five hundred dollars, and we have some people that walk as an individual. It's very simple to form a team. So once you go on the website and get registered, there's a ten-dollar registration fee per person, and then each person is asked to try to raise one hundred dollars. And once you raise your hundred dollars, you earn your Relay T-shirt. And then there's different incentive levels, like we have individuals who raise one thousand dollars, and they're considered the grand club. Only one percent of relays nationwide attain this level, and last year at our relay, we had nineteen members at the grand club level. So we work, we work very hard, and we have team meetings. Our next team meeting will be on, it's the third Tuesday every month, the next team meeting is next Tuesday, April fifteenth. And everyone is welcome.
Is there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the proclamation declaring the week of June the twenty-second through June the twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, as Cancer Relay for Life.
Can I second? The motion is second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's give you this proclamation.
Well, you'll all be invited to the survivor dinner. You'll get your invitations in the mail in May.
Approve or disapprove Resolution R fourteen-eleven, that's the budget adjustments. John went through those budget adjustments on Tuesday. If there's no questions, I'd like to have a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution R dash fourteen dash eleven, budget adjustments.
Second. Here's a motion is second to approve the budget adjustments on Resolution R fourteen-eleven. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Approve or disapprove Resolution Number R fourteen-twelve, authorizing the execution delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement by and between Grant County, New Mexico, and the New Mexico Finance Authority, evidencing a special limited obligation of Grant County to pay a principal amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand five-hundred-and-seventeen for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing a new office, bathroom, and meeting room on the existing fire station for use by the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Resolution R fourteen-twelve.
Can I second? Motion is second to approve R fourteen-twelve. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say no.
I was just going to point out to the Commission that these funds will be used, that will be used to pay this back will be coming from the state fire funds from that fire department and not out of the general fund.
All those in favor, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R fourteen-thirteen, Viva Santa Rita Subdivision Community Area Improvement District Determination of Cost of the Road Improvement and the County to Construct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution R dash fourteen dash thirteen.
Second. The motion is second to approve R fourteen thirteen. Is there any discussion? Dory doesn't want to say anything? All right, all those in favor, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R fourteen-fourteen, Viva Santa Rita Subdivision Community Area Improvement District Portion of Cost to Be Assessed to the Benefited Tracks.
Chairman, motion to approve Resolution R fourteen-fourteen.
Second. This is a motion is second to approve fourteen-fourteen. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R fourteen-fifteen, Viva Santa Rita Subdivision Community Area Improvement District Filing of the Assessment Role.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution R fourteen dash fifteen.
Second. The motion is second to approve R fourteen-fifteen. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. The last one. Approve or disapprove Resolution fourteen-sixteen, Viva Santa Rita Improvement District, time and place for the Viva Santa Rita Improvement District Assessment Role Hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R fourteen-sixteen.
Second. The motion is second to approve Resolution fourteen-sixteen. Is there any discussion on that motion here, sir?
Mr. Chairman, the Commission just wanted to point out that on the resolution, we have stated the date and time. The date will be May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, time is nine A M here in the Grant County Commission Meeting Room. That'll be before our next works, work session. I believe that's a Tuesday.
So it'll be nine o'clock here, and the work session will start immediately thereafter.
That'll be the big time of the assessment hearing, and the hopes is, if the hearing goes well, then we may have on the Thursday meeting, a resolution to approve this, right, Dory?
See, I knew she was gonna talk.
That's why I make her talk. She likes it.
Okay, May twentieth for the hearing. May twenty-second to approve and confirm the assessment role. At that point, we have heard from the residents, and the cost is levied through an ordinance. At that point, we have heard from the residents, and their cost is levied through an ordinance. So on the 22nd, also a notice of intent to adopt an ordinance to levy the assessments. And thereafter, we post the ordinance for 14 days, and so thereafter, I'm thinking it's effective. And when we see the first payment, we have a resident here in the audience that has written his check already. And as soon as we get that first check, the county does have to start projects, the construction of the project within 60 days.
And I think that the road manager's intent is to do it in June.
Yes.
His intent should be within.
Before 60 days.
As soon as this is all set up, he's going to start the construction.
And I think that does fit the pace that the statues are going through, that you have to go through.
Right, right. It doesn't say you have to wait 60 days. It says you have to start within.
That is correct.
All right, thank you very much, Dory.
Thank you, Dory.
Okay, so any further discussion on R-1416? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor, signal five, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call to order the Grant County Indigent Healthcare Health Plan Claims Board. First item on that agenda is approve or disapprove the Health Plan Claims Family Indigent.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Health Claims, Health Plan Claims Indigent Fund for February 20th, 2014.
They just changed that title one more time. We want them to say the title. There's a motion and a second to approve the Health Plan Claims for February 20th, 2014. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the April 2nd Indigent Burial Certificate for Terazza's Funeral Chaperones.
There's a word to approve the April 2nd, 2014 Indigent Burial Certificate for Terazza's Funeral Chaperones.
Second.
The motion is proper second to approve the April 2nd Indigent Burial Certificate. Is there any discussion on that motion today? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can we get a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent Health Plan Claims Board?
Second.
All those in favor, signify, signify by saying no.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners, and we'll stand for county reports. Madam Sester, you look like you're the lone wolf out there today. You've been abandoned.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, no new report, okay. Rob?
I don't have any comment, thank you.
All right, John?
I'd just like to bring to Commissioners' attention our Deputy Administrator in the Jail, Mr. Joseph Andezol, has been attending the leadership training through Western New Mexico University, and he graduates today at 3:00. Has completed that program. Really proud of Joseph. He's done a great job, done a great job in the facility as well, so it's an honor to have him. It's 3:00 today at Best Forward Global Resource Center. He's going to graduate. So I threaten him that I'm going to send a bunch of people to stand up and yell and cheer for him when he walks across the stage, so. He's prepared, and, but he's doing a great job, and as part of his project, his, his team's project, we actually have a tub out front in the manager's office that they're collecting toiletry items and like undershirts, socks, underwear that are unwrapped for the children that are, have to be taken from their homes in the middle of nights and stuff because of domestic violence or other things. And so that's his class project, to get a bank of this, because a lot of times they, they don't have anything when they leave the house, and so this way they'll have at least the basic needs. So that's his class project, so that's out there. He's asked if he could put one here. They're putting them around town to collect those goods, and so we have one out front.
All right.
Mr.?
No, just, we did have a fire yesterday, and I just want to remind everyone to be careful when you're out there. If it's dry, we just got to try and team up and try and make sure we don't have any more. And I'd like to thank the firefighters that are out there fighting the fires still. Actually, there's some that are still fighting them right now. It's, it's, they're just putting the last few members out, I believe, is what I was told, so we thank them very much for reacting. It's all, most of these gentlemen are volunteers, taking away from their families at night, so we'd like to definitely thank them for what they do. That's all I've got. Thank you, Commissioner.
I can tell on the fires, we just got to be super careful. We got to be careful where we drive, what we do, the activities we have up in the forest and also in the far lands like this one here by the airport. It's, it's, it's a powder keg right now. We got to be careful. And also, I'd like to thank the women firefighters for being out there. One other thing I have is that I just want to reiterate the Arizona Water Settlement Act public meeting on April the 14th, 2014, at Cliff High School. It's going to be starting out at 4:00 PM in the lobby. The Bureau of Reclamation is going to be there, and State Stream Commission will be there for answers for an hour. They're going to have an excellent, sound like dinner that they're going to have. It's going to be sponsored by the HEA Farm and Livestock Bureau. Dinner is being prepared and served by the family career and community leaders of America. And do we know how much that's going to be?
It's a voluntary donation, a suggested donation of $5.
Okay, thank you. Then after that, from 6:00 to 8:00, they're going to have presentations and a period of public questions and then remarks then. So anyone who has any questions, I would highly recommend that you go there and listen, listen to what is being said. And I think it'll be really informative for you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted really to attend that meeting, but I will be out of the state on business, but I appreciate you representing us while there. You bet. Thank you, you'll be. I guess for my report, I attended the Fair Board Meeting on Tuesday night. And the, the fair dates are going to be September 24th through the 27th. There's still a couple little things that the county needs to attend to, but I'll get with John on those. We also had a solid waste authority. We're looking at some new ways to get rid of branches and yard waste where we can probably do it a lot cheaper. It's a, it's an incinerator is what it is, but it's a, it's a new age incinerator. So it doesn't really create any smoke, and all it comes out is, is white ash, so it may be, may be the wave of the future. We were able to, to take a ton and get rid of it for about $140, and right now, if we do it in the landfill, it's about.
It's always a hundred ton.
It's a hundred ton for $150 compared to about $7,000 if we do it in a landfill. So we're going to be looking into that. And other than that, unless anybody else has something to bring up, and we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signal five, say no.
Aye.